Yes, we got power.
Oh, you had the hot. Oh. Oh. Just don't put it on mute if it can't get it.
You got power day long?
All right, y'all ready? Need a motion to go into work session.
Second.
Second, all fair, right?
Aye.
All right, that's right, we've got another aisle here. Hello, Wendy.
Hi.
We're not talking to you.
We saw you eating doughnuts this morning.
Um, I'm eating a doughnut right now.
Hang up that phone.
But, uh, all right, Mr., Jason, you ready?
Yes, sir. So, um, Mr. Chairman, we have, we were fortunate with the 2015-2021, uh, 2015-2021 SPOS that we collected more than was originally projected. So, um, the original projection was about $12 million, and so a portion of that went to the city, and then we had about 9.9 million that was allocated for different county projects. So when, when collections go beyond what you projected, um, you can then go back and, and allocate those excess collections to any category that was on that referendum. And so, um, that's why we're here tonight is to, uh, to kind of start having that conversation about, um, how you would want to, um, allocate some of those excess proceeds. And so, we have, um, we have given the city their, their percentage of it, so you have a balance there of 842, 832, um, remaining to allocate. And, uh, some of our line items still have money in them to be expended, uh, and there are plans for, for some of those items, uh, and, uh, but, but this would be over and above, um, what's either remaining or, or the zero balance that's there. So, uh, all, all the categories that are there before you are, uh, fair game, and I know we've got some departments that, that have needs, they've come to me with recently, um, I did let, I let them know that we'd be having this, um, conversation, and, uh, that this might be a good time to kind of present those. So at some point, uh, I know we've got some department heads that wanted to, to speak with the board about some of those, some of those items that they have in mind. But, uh, unless you have any questions, uh, I'm open to those, um, or, or we can just, uh, go ahead and, and start having any type of conversation, you see fit, Mr. Chairman, on how to allocate that remaining money. I've, I've got this, um, just a housekeeping matter, I've got it pulled up here, and, um, as you come up with amounts, if, if we get to that point today to come up with the amounts to go in these categories, I can plug it in and it'll adjust, uh, the, the running total down at the bottom, so you'll know, uh, what, what's left to allocate.
On the Sheriff's Department, that was just, uh, vehicles only?
Vehicles only is the way it was, uh, so the way I've got that written out there, that's, that's the language that was used in the, in the referendum and in the intergovernmental agreement.
And is that?
That's kind of what you're bound to.
Any other, any other, uh, funds on the vehicles used other than the, uh, the SPOS?
So on, on the Sheriff's vehicles, we've got money in the new SPOS, um, that, that they'll roll into, um, now on, on some of that. So there was, there's money in the, in the new SPOS for vehicles, the CAD and dispatch software, I think, with the, with the items there.
But no other money's used for that vehicle other than SPOS money, right? I guess what I'm getting, uh, if we, if we needed, just let, let's, let's start with a Sheriff's Department. If, if we needed extra funds other where, in other places in the Sheriff's Department, we were using general fund for the vehicles, we could offset.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We could offset it with the SPOS and, and you, and redirect that money somewhere else if needed.
Right, the general funds, yes, yes.
I guess what I'm asking, the general fund, are we using any general fund money to buy vehicles, is all out of SPOS?
No, we never have.
Okay.
Unless they buy one out of confiscated or.
Right.
So my question real quick, uh, Jason, you're talking about some numbers and some requests, do we have a physical copy request that departments need?
We don't have that at that point. I, um, I wasn't sure whether to go ahead and open it up for, for that type of thing, or, or how the board might want to proceed on that.
Right, so I, I know for me, you know, we've had some big expenditures come up with regards to roads, and I know we typically have some resources allocated, um, and then of course there's, um, a line item on, and what I remember reading on the ballot about parks, and I know Haddock has some immediate needs that may not be in a particular budget at this point. So my first, you know, goal would be, of course, any road projects that we could use any SPOS funds for, um, and then of course the parks, because obviously Haddock has some serious stuff that we need to address that might not be in, um, general fund, and then EMA, because, you know, we talked about ordering those trucks, and in the last meeting we discovered, you know, we didn't have funds, and we did Tashu and Shannon would find some miracle money someplace, so those would be my top three, the roads, the, um, parks, and then of course EMA fire trucks.
Well, I'm just looking, I mean, my first two right now is looking at the EMA and the Sheriff's Department, because we know there's, there's a need there. You know, we've got Haddock hadn't been addressed, we know there's some, uh, issues with your Haddock part, you've already, you've been doing, you, you've got a thorough walk, walk through on that one at this point.
Right, the Parks and Rec Director, Bert and I did a tour of some issues down there. But EMA, Sheriff's Office, and, um, parks need to be looked, you know, looked at very heavily in this.
Well, do we know the needs in the Sheriff's Office?
You want to come forward?
Sure.
Since you got, this is a work session.
All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. All right, now y'all don't have a heart attack here. As you know, in 2020, we didn't get any cars at all, so we were having to maintain the older vehicles, uh, which increases your maintenance costs and whatnot, and then 2021, we got seven cars. Each year, we generally get six cars, so in two years, we got seven cars, that put us short, five cars that we should have rolled down. This year, uh, we had to change to the Ford Explorers, they went, they were a little bit more expensive, so we had to downcut a car. So then that would be another car, so essentially, we're looking at being minus six cars altogether. I've talked with the sheriff, I've talked with the chief deputy, uh, and we've come up with, uh, what we'd like to propose to you, uh, and I've got some information for you. What we would like to do, and I'm not trying to be greedy or anything like that, but, uh, we do have to have patrol cars that are in good working order to service the citizens of Jones County. I have a list here that I'll hand out to each one of y'all, but essentially what we are asking for, um, and whatever you give us, uh, we would like to get two patrol vehicles fully outfitted, um, we've asked for one patrol vehicle with a tag reader system, and we've asked for two investigator cars for a total of five cars. With those total of five cars being outfitted, um, the price sticker on that, don't have sticker shock, is $279,984.52. I'll tell you this, a tag reader car, one car by itself from getting the car to outfitting it is $79,432. Now, with that being said, um, we have three tag readers operational right now, a fourth one is going to go in a car that is an interceptor, and then the, since January, the three tag reader systems, then one of those tag reader systems was in John Kyle's car, who was at a, um, our explosives dogs' car, he only run it for two weeks. Those three cars, uh, generated $32,646 in two and a half months. Now, that's, it's not that we're out here to make money with those things, that's just a side effect of coming out here and patrolling and catching bad guys with the tag readers. Now, those are the numbers that I looked at just for the tag readers, just for those, uh, specific violations of suspended driver's license, no insurance, and whatnot. Now, those cars are actually being run at half capacity of what they can actually do, because we had to get some, uh, new computers for those cars, which we've got those ordered. Uh, the computers in the cars now are running at four gigawatt, gigawatts of power, whatever, megabytes, or however, and to run efficiently, they need 16. Uh, we talked with LSAG North America, and we were trying to download right at 3 million tags, and those old tag, those old computers were trying to do that stuff, but we've got that under control. But I say that, don't be frightened by a car costing $79,000. It'll definitely make its money back within the, within the year. But what, uh, what we'd really like to get, and if you guys, um, ladies and gentlemen, if y'all say no to a $79,000 car, is we really need two patrol cars and two investigators' cars. Now, that, uh, that one tag reader car actually works as a patrol car in itself, so that's actually three patrol cars and two investigators' cars. The investigators are driving around in 2010s, 2012, and the sheriff has stretched those out. The sheriff has always been more to have cars on patrol to service the citizens, and the investigators are kind of like the redhead's stepchild, they just drive them longer and longer and longer. Some of those cars are starting to go, like, we had to put Jimmy Black's car down, we had to put Kenny Gleaton's Tahoe down, so we're, we're, we're using some stuff where the investigators, where some holes were at, moving cars. The, um, the total on a patrol car fully outfitted is $58,732. Uh, that includes a watch guard camera system, that's the kind of camera system that y'all saw, the video of our deputy getting shot, uh, very good video on that. It comes with a body camera system, what you also saw the deputy had, comes with a GPS radio for the GPS tracking in our cars, comes with a speaking radio, comes with the lights, the printers, the computers, the radar, and, uh, I'll tell you this, it's, fire trucks and patrol cars, they're expensive when you start putting lights and sirens and equipment and things like that in there. Two patrol cars, um, is $117,464, and that's nothing special, that's just the patrol car, everyday average patrol car that comes out. Like I said, the one patrol car with a tag reader, a tag reader system alone is $19,000 by itself, and then you add that, uh, 25 that it costs just to outfit a regular car, and you come up to the, uh, price of 79, because that's $33,700 for the car. And the two investigators' vehicles, uh, they're $34,100 apiece, and they cost $7,044 to outfit. So, you know, if you had two investigators' cars, that's $83,000. If you had your tag reader car, that's $79,000. If you had your two patrol cars, that is $117,000, which comes to this number, if I can just come up and give you this. Now, if you want to give us all that, we would love it, we could definitely use it if you decide we don't need all that, we do need it, but, um, we're here to try to pick up some of the slack in, in, in what we've got going on for the deficiency in cars. And I'd be happy to answer any question, this is nothing special, this is a, this is not even the EcoBoost, this is not even the most expensive Explorer that they try to sell law enforcement, this is the one that's, that's, you know, it's the regular one that you and I pretty much can buy, it just has a different suspension on it for, for the law enforcement, it's not the EcoBoost, the EcoBoost are, uh, $38,000 a car, these are the cars that are $33,700. So, we, we do have a need for the cars, we, we are minus about six cars what we normally have, uh, if y'all look at Jimmy Howard's car out front, our, our office, our deputy that does that thing, you see he's driving a 13, so we're, we're getting the life out of the cars, a lot of my spare cars are 2013s. I was not going to be able to funnel down the cars, like I said, because we didn't get the 2020s, and we're still using our, our 15 Ford Explorers for our school resource officers, where we would normally have funneled those down as well and got them something different, we're trying to conserve money, I know that sounds like a, uh, a lot of money, and $279,000 is a lot of money, uh, you know, um, but we're trying to, we're trying to stretch it as much as we can without, uh, coming into these unnecessary, uh, maintenance costs, because when heads start, uh, going, or, you know, the valves start sticking, ticking, and all that good stuff like that, you know, you go to just regular mechanics, $4,500 to go in there and get that done. And I really don't want to spend a whole lot of money on fixing cars that I know that I should already be giving to you guys, that are driving a little bit easier for, like, Public Works can drive, or, uh, Parks and Recreations can drive. So, that's, I don't think we're, we're asking for, um, anything extravagant, and like again I say, on the tag reader system, you just kind of get blowed away when you, you see the $79,000, and we're not in the business to make money, but they do make money. So, um, that's what we would ask you for, and, uh, we'll take whatever you give us.
That number right there will catch you up on what you haven't, that'll get you back where you need to be.
That'll get me back right. That'll get me back right on cars, um, and I should be able to give you a heap of them back, so I can stop fixing them, I can move some down for spares. The, the plan is to have 16s as spares, and those cars are five years old. Generally, we put anywhere from 30,000 plus miles on a car a year, so you're talking about in five years, most of your cars are at 150,000, and they're hard miles, um, they're, they're going, they're driving, you know, they're, they're getting on them, you know, we don't like to, uh, there's more than just two speeds, off the gas pedal and to the floor, but most of the time when people are calling, we're going, we're putting a lot of more strain on the engines, uh, and they go down some of these roads, as Commissioner, Martin said, some of the roads, when we hit them potholes, we're having to replace struts and, uh, you know, the, the parts up on their front end, and when you take that in there and you get that $1,200, $1,500 bill from, uh, you know, wherever it be, West Clinton or Sheffield's or whatever, some of these older cars, I don't know if you've ridden around in them, is just kind of shy of going, I hope they don't wreck and we get in a lawsuit kind of deal. You know, we want our deputies to be safe, we want the citizens to be safe, um, we, we understand y'all had this surplus, and we understand that it needs to go around to different places too. But that is what I have come and asked, I have discussed it with the sheriff, um, you know, and whatever you can give us to, to get us, you know, in a better shape, that, that'd be great, I'm not, certainly not trying to take the whole 800,000, I do understand that that's a lot, that's a big chunk of it, and I understand that the EMA probably needs a fire truck, and that, and I know it's not going to be cheap. You know, we have a good wish list, we'd love to have a bunch of fancy dancy stuff, but really I need some patrol cars, just regular, everyday patrol cars, and something for the investigators to drive that are, that's not 12 years old and, and starting to break down.
I'll start it off, we, we got, you know, you got to have the tools to do the job, and, and I fully support this, to make sure you got what you need.
Yes, sir.
I'm just one.
Um, and here's something, I didn't make a whole lot of copies of this, but, uh, you can kind of pass that around too, that's on your tag reader system. Currently, we have four tag reader systems, one, one is not operational right now, it will be installed in the car in the next week or so, is that interceptor. We've got tag reader on all our K9 cars, we're trying to, you know, trying to keep meth, drugs, things like that out here, and, and like I said, it's not a money-making, we're not out here to stop cars to make money, but that's just a, a consequence of having a tag reader and people riding around with no, uh, no driver's license, no insurance, warrants, uh, stolen cars, um, and when you do that, and you write that off that tag reader system, because it caught it, uh, it's a really good tool, I mean, it's, uh, it's a really good tool to, to, to catch these things, and, you know, Jones County's a great county, uh, we just kind of want to keep it that way, I live here, y'all all live here, um, so, and I know that, I know the tag reader system, that's expensive, but I don't know where that money goes to, but somebody's sure happy we have it. So, I don't think, we, we don't get that directly back to the Sheriff's Office, I don't know if that goes with the courts or the general funds, that's a little bit out of my league, I don't know where that money goes, but it's generating money somewhere for somebody.
Commissioner Martin, I'm going to go ladies first and then come to you, if it's all right.
Now, what are, what are we about to do?
I'm just going for any comments, I think I, uh, Ms. Vaughn, did you have something to say?
I have nothing, I understand the cost of these vehicles, and I know that it's just something that we need.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Martin, you got any comment or question?
But you know, I'm always going to be a fan of electrifying our, our system, but priority wise, you know, I want to hear all of our needs, um, because we know that fire trucks are there, and I like to be clear, here is exactly what we have here, the budgetary items that we need, um, so we can address it and try to meet as many needs as we can, but, again, my priority's going to be fire trucks, so, um, let's finish here and what else is out there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wood?
I think this is a very reasonable, middle-of-the-road request the Sheriff's Office made, I'll support it, but I would like to hear the other requests that other departments have.
All right, I agree, I, I think we need to hear the, what the other departments have, so we can make a priority list and vote on those lists. One question I would have, what did, this may be more of a Jason question, um, so we allocated in the SPOS when we put this dollar amount in here for average of six vehicles a year, if we didn't buy any in 2020, which I know we didn't, we didn't pull that money out, so that money should still be there, right?
Right.
We just didn't buy them, or where do we?
So on the most recent vehicle purchase, the, uh, there, there was, a month or so ago, um, and, and it's still in the bank account, because we haven't paid for the vehicles yet, but, um, there was money left in that Sheriff's vehicle line item, and so when the board approved the, um, Fords, um, what's left there will go to those, to, what's left in this one will go to help purchase those Fords, and it'll take that money plus a little bit of a new SPOS.
Right, I had $164,000 left in that SPOS, uh, without fitting those cars that, uh, you Commissioners approved, um, I used that 164, and then I had to come out some more in the budget and some of my equipment funds and, and some of the things, and I still have got a little bit for, I, I need to pull from here and there, but, uh, I've used that, I've used all of that.
So this one is, from sort of the regular allocation standpoint, this one's used up, and then we're into the new SPOS just a little bit, I guess.
And I'll have to get into that just a little bit, not too much.
I guess I'm still a little confused, the six cars didn't go away, we still have the money to buy them, so we're not, when you say you're six down, I get that, because we don't have them.
Right.
But the money's there to buy five that we just bought, five more and six more without allocating new money out of the SPOS, is that right?
Yes, um.
Because, because I don't remember us moving, because based off of it being Sheriff's vehicles, we can't move it anywhere else, we can only buy Sheriff's vehicles, so if there were six that weren't bought in 2020, the money for those six, if it was, you know, $50,000, that's $300,000, that $300,000 is still somewhere, we just need to get the vehicles with it.
And I think what happened is it extended the old vehicles beyond their, then get rid of them and get new ones, that's what we're doing.
But we don't need it, we still got the money in the account to buy them, is what I'm asking, is, or did we move?
So basically, the, it's like a, so really the money that we're, we're just spending right now on those, on those Fords, that would have been spent two years ago, had vehicles been available.
From my understanding, it would have been in what I'm asking for now, pretty much.
And so, um, it wasn't spent then, or the year after, um, and so, so it's still sitting there right now, and so it's going to those. So really, that money would have been spent 20, late 2020, early 2021, and then you would have had, um, 2021, 2022, um, purchase.
I understand what you're saying, Sam, it's a delayed purchase, everything's moved back in one year.
Yeah, I understand.
My money's still there.
Right, the money's still there, this is, this is overage of money, so we're requesting additional money to go towards our stock, and I don't want to be mistaken at all that we don't want the sheriff to have anything that's unsafe, not top-notch, we, we have a top-notch Sheriff's Department, we want to have top-notch vehicles and top-notch equipment, and I, I hope we accounted for that in this, in this line item for the SPOS, and, um, so, so I don't want to take anything away from, I just want to know where the money is, if we didn't buy the vehicles, it doesn't go away, if it's sitting in a 2020 fund, or if it's sitting in a 2021 SPO fund, now we're saying we got additional money collected in a 2020 fund, that we didn't spend money out of, so the money for these vehicles should be somewhere, so that we don't have to allocate more money for. If, I, I do understand that they're costing more, so we may have one or two vehicles that we don't have, because I know like this one, when we went to the, um, the vehicles that we couldn't get, the, the other ones, it cost you a vehicle, absolutely, you got to have that one, and that, because I think they lost one there, but I'm just, I'm just questioning where the, where the money is in the SPOS, because I think if they didn't get them in 2020, maybe we should have ordered 12 in 2021, instead of.
If I answer that question for you.
Well, if I had the checkbook, I probably would have.
Yeah, and we might not be, we still might not be able to get 12, right?
You want to ask LaVita?
As of March the 2nd, you still had your 164, $935.97 still in the 2015 SPOS that has not been moved in.
Okay.
And that is not a part of that $832,000, $832,000.
164, no.
$842,000, $832.45.
And she's got her calculator with me, she told me to let, let y'all know that.
So the money is there.
To pay for what we've got ordered, huh? Right?
From my understanding, that'd have paid for what we've got ordered, and what we outfitted the car, that 164 that LaVita's talking about, that money is spent, or what you guys authorized for us to get cars in 2022. That still doesn't change the fact that we don't have those other cars from 2020.
So when did our 22, so are we, so we have money, I'm just, I guess I'm just.
This is the 2015 SPOS that we're talking about, this ended on July 2021. The new SPOS started August 2021, which is the 2021 SPOS.
Okay, so the cars are.
This is the 2015 that he's talking about.
So the cars we just bought, which are out of this SPOS.
Oh, the past SPOS, past SPOS.
Past, this one.
Yeah.
This is the past SPOS, this is not the current.
Not the new one, the, the past one is what we're, we're buying these current cars out of.
So have we already encumbered the ones that we just bought, or are they going to be paid for out of this 164?
They'll be paid, his new ones, are those ones you're talking about back order, Travis?
Um, my understanding is the ones that, that we ordered, the one from, uh, Unadilla, is going to be bringing out from that 164, that's my understanding.
And that's why the money is still sitting there, and that'll come out of 2015's SPOS.
And then it, then, then they'll be at zero, like we're showing right now.
Yeah, and it'll be at zero.
And then we'll be at zero.
Right, so, so that's.
But still.
The cars we just ordered were for 2020, so now you need another six for 2021, 21, that would come out of this SPOS, so.
I'm getting confused.
Yeah, I kind of, yeah, I've kind of, yeah, I understand.
When we get our priority list, maybe we just put a, put a tally on there, because I'm, and I don't want to beat the dead horse, but if we, if we had six cars that we accounted, we allotted money for, and we didn't buy them, the money should be somewhere, either in 2015 or 2021, we should. Right?
Whatever cars that he ordered, those were for the 2015, that SPOS goes for six years, 2015 to 2021, that SPOS ended July 2021, this is the SPOS that we're talking about right now. So, he's saying that his vehicles that he's ordered, that he's never received, correct, Travis? You have to receive them when you order them.
I, we ordered, what, what day was it I came in here, uh, was it February, February?
Last time, we just, we just approved it a couple meetings ago, because they, they canceled the chargers, they canceled the Durango's.
They were tight and lost one, lost the vehicle.
And they was able to find the, the Ford's floors.
Right.
Which I thought was cheaper, but ended up being more expensive than the.
No, they were actually cheaper than the Durango.
And that's one of, at that time, I, you, you remember me just saying that if they're cheap enough that we can add a car, because it was my understanding that the sheriff's running kind of on the behindside when it comes to catching up on cars.
Right, right.
Because he's, he said he's had, you know, between this and that, he's had a lot of cars he's lost, but, uh.
And absolutely that he's behind on cars, because we didn't order them for a year, so, so he definitely needs six more cars, I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just thinking, I'm just asking, if, on our end, the money should already be there for six more cars that they need, that they didn't get.
That's the ones he got ordered, not.
Right.
This is having to be paid for.
The ones that he's ordering now, that we're paying for out of the 2015 SPOS, yeah, would have been, under normal circumstances, would have been paid for out of the new SPOS. Right? So, so the, the vehicle purchase, the, so if, if we were on normal schedule, we're in the, we're in the new, we're in the new SPOS now, and so there's money in the new SPOS allocated for vehicles, one purchase a year, um, it's typically what we've done, and so, so this first purchase in, under the new SPOS would have been made right about now. Because we still had money in that old SPOS, it was used to make the purchase right now, and there was no purchase made this time last year, um, and I think the year prior, it got delayed, we were able to get some type of vehicles later in the year, I think.
Correct.
So the, so to help me, uh, try to understand it, if you, if you assume we purchase on one, on January 1st of every year, um, so 16, 17, 18, 19, those are all made roughly in the normal timing, 2020. Twenty-twenty, um, the purchase was delayed, it was, you know, later, maybe later in the year than we normally would have been, and different types of vehicles and such. And then twenty-twenty-one, we weren't able to purchase at all. So that, that two hundred thousand wasn't used, so it, or roughly two hundred thousand, so it was still sitting there. We typically would have rolled into the new splosh. Um, and so two hundred thousand would have been spent about this time out of that new splosh. Instead, we had that old splosh money, uh, still sitting there, that's going to, to help, uh, purchase those, uh, the Fords. And so, I think you would, you would still have, um, so now, you wouldn't be spending as much out of the new splosh as you would have been otherwise. You wouldn't have been spending the full year's allocation out of the new splosh that you, that you would be spending under normal circumstances.
I believe I wound up spending out of the splosh as, I want to say thirty thousand dollars.
Out of the new one, okay.
Out of this new one, to pay for the cars that we just ordered in February. However y'all do that math, I just know we're, and I understand, however y'all do that math, I know that we're short six cars.
Right.
And so, I should have brought Cheryl in here with me, Cheryl's a whiz with the splosh over there, so. But I know that she sent me over here, and she had it figured out, and so I listen to her.
She's watching that, I think.
She probably is.
I think the confusing thing is two sploshes,
Yeah.
how we do the money and how they've ordered the vehicles, and, and so the, the.
And the twenty-twenty-ones were actually ordered, I think, in the, they were all ordered after September, so they've been in this budget years too, so that puts us behind again. That makes sense.
Yeah, but, but with the splosh, when you collect the money and it sits in a fund, it don't matter if you spend it today, tomorrow, or five years from now, that splosh is still there until you enter that bucket. So if we didn't order them in twenty-twenty, and we order them in twenty-twenty-four, they're still paid for out of the twenty-twenty splosh. So if the money's still there, we need to put, I mean, I, yes, absolutely, they're six cars behind, because we didn't order them one year. So he's exactly right, they're six cars, we just need to figure out, so, so the answer is, yes, we, I think we all support, the six cars, I just, just how the money, and, and if we've got it in one splosh, and we don't have to take it out of this money, then this money goes, you know, to other priorities. If, if there's an additional need for vehicles, like we know there's one because it costs more, um, and, and we also know, and I'm going to say this about all the other ones, we also know the prices of, the price of everything is up thirty, forty percent.
It's going way up.
So if we, if we're looking at fifteen cars, we may be two or three cars short, just based on cost. And that's something totally, but I was just confused on, we didn't order six cars in twenty-twenty, so we need six now, out of different money. Just want to make sure that we didn't, we, meaning us, didn't do anything with the money from, from twenty-twenty that the sheriff's department had allocated for cars. And that caused it to be the six missing.
Whatever y'all come up with, I need six.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Point, six cars needed, sheriff's department, yeah.
Don, you want to come up? I got two, two department heads here on request.
Thanks Travis for putting up with our.
Thank you, thank you Travis.
No, y'all stewards of our money, so I understand.
Captain, that was a good presentation, I think, uh, that, uh, the tag car is, that's a deal, that's a steal.
It definitely gets a lot of criminals off the street.
Um, we all know what we need, and that's another, uh, pumper tanker. And, uh, I talked with the, the folks next door here in Milledgeville, uh, they've got two tankers, pumper tankers that'll be coming off the line in December. Three seventeen for each of them. Um, that's brand new.
How many gallons?
I'm sorry?
How many gallons?
Three thousand.
Okay.
And they'll have twelve fifty pumps, you, you get your choice, one thousand, two, twelve fifty.
I'm keep going.
Either a thousand, twelve fifty, or fifteen hundred.
Twelve fifty.
Yeah, twelve fifty all day long, but it'll carry three thousand gallons.
Commissioner Martin, you had a question for Don?
Yeah, so it was wrestling the papers, I didn't hear the price, how much was it?
He wanted to know what price the.
Three seventeen.
Three seventeen each.
Each, okay, and how many do we need?
I actually need two, but, uh, we just ordered, we just, we just made that purchase of the used vehicle a couple weeks back. Um, and that was much needed. But we, we're still in the hole too, but, but I understand these funds here, and I
Right.
understand how it works. I think for, it, on sidebar, I think that every other year now, and I'll try to have a line item for a new fire truck to get caught up every other year. Certainly, we can't do it every year, but maybe one every other year.
Any questions for Don? Mr. Chairman, can I mention something real quick? Sure. Um, so at the, at the last meeting, I guess it was the last meeting, we had the conversation about, buying the, the used vehicle and, and the price of the new vehicles, and there was some interest in, in doing, um, the one used vehicle and one new vehicle if we could find the money. And, um, and so, if, if there was an interest, Lavita and I have met and looked at the finances, really, the way to get the, any money for that second vehicle that we were talking about last time, um, would be, you know, this is probably your best bet in terms of a pot of money to, to grab from to, to do that, so. It was
What's that?
The new one, from, from last time.
Three seventeen.
It was, okay.
There was a pumper and a pumper tanker, the pumper was three fifteen, and the pumper tanker was three seventeen, there's not much
Okay.
price difference between those.
So one of those was new and one of them was used, is that what we're?
They were both new.
The one sixty-nine was the price of the
Of the used one, yes sir.
We're going ahead with that purchase, we, you know, we had the money for that, but.
So the three seventeen would get another new one that we were?
Yes, sir.
And, not to complicate things, but, um, EMA still has one fourteen as a remaining balance. After the purchase of the, after the purchase of the one sixty-nine used vehicle, um, and after the money for the generators is backed out, um, he's still got a hundred and fourteen left there out of his regular allocation that you can put with whatever excess, um, allocation you see fit to, to go towards those, to go towards a purchase. Yes, sir. About halfway there on another new truck?
Right, yes, sir.
Don, have you put it in your budget for some of the older trucks to go back and be refurbished at their possibly?
I have, I actually got prices on, on that, and I, and I, that's, that's somewhat weighing to go where people are going these days. Um, now, the turnaround time, I don't, I can't, nobody knows how long it's going to take to refurb one.
Better allocate a year for it to sit out.
Right, yeah, exactly, maybe even a little bit more.
Right, but it is cheaper than?
Absolutely, yes.
Especially on the customs.
Uh, but I just found out that Fausts is going, just signed off on, uh, custom, uh, Spartan. So they're going with Spartan chassis now, they're going to be red hot, and they're going to be a lot cheaper than any of the other customs, so you can, you can rest your shirt out. But that's not on my mind to have anything custom, I want something that'll work and do us and, um, and serve, not worried about anything else.
Ms. Bone, you got any questions? Excuse me, I don't know.
Commissioner Bone? Sorry, I was on mute, I was just talking to you. No, I have no questions, I, I, I think that we know that we need them.
All right, Commissioner Martin, any more questions?
So, just to be clear, we need to, if we ordered them, uh, that's six thirty-four, he has hundreds of change remaining, so we basically need about a half million out of this excess funds, correct?
Five twenty for two is what I got.
How much?
I got five twenty for two of them.
Five twenty for two of them?
Five twenty, so.
That's utilizing the one fourteen that we've got from the previous.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So five twenty, so we'd have enough to help the sheriff and some of the other departments and fix, um, the Haddock Park, so I'm comfortable as long as we can fit it into the budget.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wood, any?
I think that's a good idea, we need to supply what the sheriff needs to keep our community safe. EMA for what they need to keep our community safe, protect property. And the Haddock Park is in, you know, it's got some safety issues there, and then we help some other departments also.
Commissioner Kitchen?
I'm doing, uh.
You're doing the math?
Doing math as we speak, so, basically, right now, with, um, the sheriff's request and the fire department's request, if we give to two eighty and the five twenty, we are at eight thirty-seven. So we are five thousand away from full. That means we got five thousand to go to Haddock Park, or any other park, and then we're done. So, let's, um, but we, we need to, still need to hear the other ones and then look at and prob, but it's a good running number to have, I mean, that's a, that's if everything was funded that everybody needs, um, this.
And then Sam, just so we're clear, I want to fix Haddock Park, so what's remaining goes to the sheriff's department, because we have some liability over in that part.
We need to do some cost estimates
Right.
in Haddock to see, because you have roots growing up in six, eight inches in the walking paths.
Right.
That's major trip hazards.
All right, thank you, Don.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Jason, whatever, uh, I see some other, do we have any other requests coming from any, any other departments? Brendan's got some, uh, from the water department. And he's got a handout, I'm going to send around to y'all.
Brendan, you got to learn, you got to go first, man.
Oh, I see that, I see that.
Travis jumped, I was like, I don't know.
We are out of money.
Brendan said that, uh, don't forget me, well, we forgot you, don't worry.
Um, I'm going to start off, I know the fire department and sheriff's department keeps safety in the community, but so does drinking water. Kind of before, it's kind of your livelihood. Um, we'll start with Haddock, I think this will reach you. Um, I don't know if y'all have ever seen the Haddock water plants, they're really bad shape. They haven't been updated in my lifetime, I guarantee that. I do not, it's kind of short notice on trying to get quotes together, on trying to rehab these.
Right.
Honestly, I feel like they should be demolished and rebuilt, started over, and they're, they're in horrible shape. I've never seen in eight years dozens of water plants that I've been to, I've never seen anything quite that bad. I feel like that's really top priority, especially if we're leaning towards Haddock. Um, ground penetrating radar is number three on my item. Currently, the only way we have to locate water pipes in the city or the county is dousing rods, witching sticks, coat hangers.
I'll go against the, I'll go up against the, I'm just picking at you, I'll go against the high tech any day.
They're, they're useful for getting the proximity, but, I mean, that's, that's all we have. We have one metal detector for the whole county, it's in the supervisor's truck, if he's not around, I mean, locating anything is, takes three, four times longer than it needs to. Um, I feel like we need to modernize the tools that we, the lack of tools that we do have on that. Um, there is a lower base model, that's fifteen thousand four hundred, that is, and a s, a basic, it's actually the mid-range, it's actually in here, the second page from the back, the Q-five series. Um, it'll, that's, we actually had a demo this morning, they came out and demoed it, it's very nice, it'll do everything we, we need it to. Um, there's the top of the, the line, the GP Rover, it has its own GPS system, so we can go through and GPS everything that we have in the county ourselves, without paying an outside source. That's double the price, third of three thousand. But that's, that could be very handy, instead of paying an outside contractor in the future to come through and do this work for us, as we're doing our own jobs, we can GPS it ourself, we always have our own records to go back on.
That's something that hadn't been done.
Has not been done.
No.
Right.
I can show you lines in this county, the city and the county, you don't want to know where they're at, I can tell you where they're at, just by accident.
Yep, that's, again, these tools, lack of, are really hurting the water department here. Uh, third item, um, replacement of lift station call-out systems. We currently have a call-out system, if power's tripped in any of our lift stations, we have thirteen lift stations around the county. We get a phone call, um, they call you, hey, you have a pump one out, they can't tell you the address. I mean, they'll tell you two seventy highway forty-nine, which is our office, we have to go through each of them. They can tell you if it's in River North or it's not in River North, so we'd have to go through nine lift stations to figure out which one it is. Um, also with that, that's currently three G, so now they want to upgrade it to four G at seventeen thousand dollars. A brand new system, again, more modern, that we can pull up on our tablet, see it anytime, pumps running, hours, in, you know, real time, is fifty thousand, what, the quote that I got this morning. So we could either pay seventeen thousand, which we're about to have to, or we're going to lose the alarm system
Right.
at all, because it's three G.
It's no longer supported.
It's no longer supported, so we're going to lose it completely, or we can pay fifty thousand, update it, modernize it, a lot more user-friendly, again, we can, we can be sitting in our office and know what's going on with our lift stations around the county. And that will cover all thirty, uh, thirteen, excuse me.
I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to ask a stupid question.
Okay.
We don't have four, you're talking about four G service, phone service, that what you?
Yes, sir.
I didn't think we had four G around here.
We don't have five G.
We're going to have five now.
Yeah, three is being disconnect, discontinued.
Okay, all right, I know that, it wasn't just a year ago, we, they were talking about four, you know, I'm a
I believe, I believe.
I like dial-up phones myself, they work so much easier.
We went from that long cord, Chairman, to.
I believe five G has been upgraded in gray.
All right, well, it hadn't had a, because we, we had this conversation several years ago, and, you know, they, they've obviously done it now.
Right, five G is here.
Good, probably phones still work good though.
Um, again, going back to Haddock renovations, our water department, I don't know if y'all have been there recently, it's very outdated. We had, we're supposed to have thirteen employees, I believe, I think it's supposed to be thirteen. We have eight hundred and sixty-four squares feet for everybody. Um, the old, uh, Station One Fire Department, the GED building, that's beside, I've been given permission to kind of take that over and move most of the guys, the maintenance guys out there, uh, it's, it's got a full kitchen, break room. I'd like to renovate the customer service office in there, give the ladies, the customer service ladies, some more room. I mean, they're sitting three foot apart from each other. If anybody's in the little room that they're in, and having a conversation, which is the main room, you, they can't hear customers on the phone, you have to stop talking, you have to step out into my office or outside, just to have a conversation in there, if, if anybody's on the phone. I mean, it's, it's smaller than this square that we're all standing in. And I'd like to build in the GED section, the old fire station, at least two offices for the maintenance supervisor and the actual water operators to have their own space for their SCADA system, all of their documentation, all their equipment, everything's all in one centralized location. Um, fifteen thousands of very rough, I have not had a chance to go through and measure it, um, but that's, that's just the top of my head, just some quick, very quick math to renovate the office and add, not add on to, but add two existing, two more offices to the existing side over there. And the last two are vehicles, um, our newest vehicle that we have is two thousand fourteen, and that's the truck that I drive. Nothing wrong with that at all. Um, we have several vehicles over three hundred thousand miles, we have one vehicle that's eight hundred and eleven thousand miles. My fourth, my fourth day, fifth day, we put the fourth different vehicle that we had in the shop. In five days, four different vehicles were in the shop down, people having a ride together, asking for rides to go check plants, go do this. It's, um, it's kind of, it's gotten a little bit better, in all honesty, with that. But we, we're in dire need, again, I have the newest vehicle that we have, and it's seven years old, about to be seven years old. About like a hundred and sixty thousand miles, which again, my truck is, nothing wrong with it, not asking for one from me, but our water operator and our meter reader, they're the ones that are doing the most driving around. I'm just asking for, um, twenty-five thousand dollars each for one, both of them, to have, this price is for a Chevy Colorado, a smaller truck. This price is for a Chevy Colorado, a smaller truck, better gas mileage, nothing. They don't need a full cab vehicle. They're not hauling equipment or anything. They just need, um, a vehicle to get around, better gas mileage. So, yeah, I think that's, that's what I was able to come up with.
With a three hundred thousand, and we've already talked about a lot of our three hundred thousand vehicles replacement.
Yeah.
Right. And we've had this conversation before, but we never got to answer what we had. We didn't know, I'll be honest with you. We didn't know what, what mileage we had, so it's, uh, we're at the, we're at the point where we're two trucks, obviously.
Yeah. We're gonna be a reliable organization. We don't need to be, they don't want like that reliable organization. We don't need to be, our folks be driving around at three hundred thousand, potentially not eight hundred thousand miles.
Say a hundred and eleven thousand.
The question I got, the last ones that we decided to buy, that were we able to ever get them? Jason, we had some order. Did we ever get those?
So, during the budget process, there were two approved, but they were for public works. We have not ordered those yet. Do you remember off that sheet when, when it said twenty? I, I think it said, um, orders for twenty twenty-three can be placed in late twenty twenty-two. They're not taking any more orders right now. And so...
I believe that is correct. And both of these vehicles are from that, from that, from that list.
I, I think almost, really most any of the vehicles. I mean, it didn't matter if you look at Chevrolet or Ford or
Yep.
what brand or what size.
They're, they're about a year out, at least, at the minimum.
Well, you know, we need to go ahead as a board and make a decision to get the trucks.
Need to plan ahead.
'Cause we know it's gonna be a, I mean...
Again, we got another year to Band-Aid these vehicles through. Um, my vehicle budget, repair budget is about gone already. I'm six months in, halfway through.
We keep hearing after, in the fall, you're gonna have a, a, a plenty of vehicles and, and at a good price.
Right.
There's, all of the manufacturers have hundreds of thousands of vehicles sitting on lots.
But they don't have any chips full.
And so, when they do get them, they're gonna, they're gonna have just a, 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 an abundance of vehicles. A lot of people waiting on them, but a bunch of vehicles, so, um, yeah. I don't know, you, you're at least a year out. We just ordered at six in August that were on the lot in Atlanta. And they just got shipped to the place to put the side bodies on them last week, on the lot last August. We're getting them late July, so it'll be one year, and they were supposedly on the lot when we ordered them.
If we can, next meeting, we'll put this on our agenda to go ahead and approve it and, and get the, get the ball rolling on it. I guess public works too. We need, if we have an order, we need to get, get those ordered too.
Yeah, Chairman, one, one, I guess clarification or comment? Can we get a, a list of the ones, Jason, maybe that, the vehicles or the things that we've, we know, we agreed to order and identified as ready to order, but we hadn't ordered them or we've ordered them, and we're still six or eight months out from getting them so that we don't think we need two or three vehicles that we've already ordered or ready to order?
Yeah.
The other thing, um, and I don't know if this must be a legal question, I, we don't have any issues with using squash money for operational costs in a, in the water department, because it's a...
I think as long as it's a capital purchase. You know, if it's something that lasts over five years and over five thousand dollars, I think is kind of the rule there.
And that's what I was looking at when we started talking about, um, flow meters or calibration controls and stuff like that. That might be an operational issue that we have to take out.
I can understand. That's why I didn't, that's why I didn't, that's why I didn't speak of that one quite yet.
I think calibration probably is an operational kind of thing. When you go to buying those flow meters, they're expensive.
Oh, yes, and we're gonna have to buy...
Wouldn't that be considered a long-term asset?
Yeah, they, they do last five years.
Yeah, they last twenty years.
Twenty years, it's a long-term asset.
And those, again, I, I wasn't gonna speak on them after kind of hearing everybody else. I can, I, I'll have to find money in the budget for that, but, um, that's... These, these are required by EPD and AWA to be calibrated every year. Almost half of them don't even work, and they have not been calibrated, and nobody knows. Nobody has any idea. So, our water loss holiday, we have, we really have no idea how much...
Yeah, well...
That's, that's dire.
That needs to be a priority.
That was, that was my highest priority walking in the door when I found that out.
Right, I agree.
It's kind of...
I appreciate the, the priority list on the side over here, and then we can see, I just didn't know, with it being an enterprise fund, did that restrict anything for squash funds?
Also, the very top one, the pump to at River North, um, I got a phone call earlier. That phone call was taped in here. I had a company tear that pump apart today, and they were calling me back saying that it's thankful that I got them to, 'cause they're saying it's gonna be about twenty-five hundred dollars to fix that pump now, versus everybody telling me in the past, we gotta buy a whole new one. So, for twenty thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars, it's, it's a big savings there, so that's why I didn't mention that one as well.
Yeah, they got more. She's asking if it's lift station River North. I said, we got several in River North.
We have nine in River North. Four more.
I like the idea with the radar being able to GPS it too.
It's, it's very nice.
That's better, that's better ongoing nightmare with the...
We spent, well, nine, two weeks ago, we spent four hours out there, three guys, four hours, trying to find a pipe that was four feet underground. But we, again, dousing rods, you can get, you can get close. And we were about four feet off, but it, it took a while, and so, that pipe, twenty-two and a half, and we didn't realize that. But it was picking up. The water's picking up straight where it should be, and it, it... We finally found it. Again, it was, it was about four hours later when that penetrated. And again, this morning, we took it out there, five minutes, found it. There it is. Told, it tells you the depth of it, tells you the diameter. It's, it's nice. It's a, it would be a, a huge asset.
Right, right.
And again, the cheaper one is the fifteen thousand dollar one. The thirty-three thousand has the GPS system on the spot. You can draw your GPS. It sends it to a, uh, computer. Like I can sit at my, my desk and actually go through and draw the map, and every, I mean, it's, it's a very nice system.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Five thirty? Where we get at five thirty?
PFA.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I think they're here, some of the members outside.
If we can wrap up, uh, this work session.
Yeah, Chairman, I would, I would just recommend that we, we come back with another one with all the priority list and the amounts associated with them
Sure.
sent to us so we can kind of make decisions on what to approve and where the money's going. Okay. I, I agree with Commissioner Martin, though. We do need to look at parks and even, even Liberty Park that we had agreed to do. Um, I don't think the money we allotted for that park will do that project now, and it's not like we can do part of it. We got grant money to, to do it, and we have a, a dollar amount to, to put, to match with that. And I don't think our dollar amount's gonna match it based on the price increases we've had lately. So, I think they had any cost that, that, uh, addicts gone, I need to do that.
PFA needs to be an open meeting or keep on in the, uh, uh, work session.
Is that an actual meeting? Isn't that a...
Okay, all right. Well, we don't have a, do we, did?
Yes.
Good, I'm good. All right, I need a motion to exit work session and open to...
So moved, Chair.
Open meeting.
And then I'm gonna have to affect y'all from your seats.
Yeah, I know.
Call in favor, ah?
Ah.
Thank you.
You get a break.
Oh, that's right. That ain't, that ain't us.
That's right.
Why you explaining? Oh, I didn't...
Maybe I can go get a cup of coffee, sit in the crowd and pepper.
Yeah.
I mean, shoot that. Congrats.
I guess.
You'll sit here? You sit right here. Oh, well, over here then, I guess. Never mind.
You wanna put her on my line? Oh, yeah, she needs to just call back as soon as...
Hey, if you weren't listening to the PFA meeting.
If you don't mind, just remind her she's not on this station, please.
She ain't got nothing better to do.
You can't, and I'm not gonna be here, so then they can't hear me.
Please. Can we go ahead? Yeah.
So, we're fine, okay?
Yep. Ready. All right, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting, or the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two PFA Board Meeting. I guess we can start by ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Can I get a?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. Sure, okay. Um, all in favor? We have no old business and only one agenda item, which is adoption of bond resolutions for the water projects. And on that, we have a, a guest, um, call up front to speak on this, Mr. John Pennell.
Good evening.
Hey, there.
How are y'all? What we have in front of the authority today is a bond resolution authorizing fifteen million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of revenue bonds for water and sewer projects for Jones County. The action item we need y'all to approve is approve that bond resolution, which authorizes the issuance of the bonds, and then they will be repaid through an intergovernmental contract with Jones County. Y'all may remember, we did something similar back in the fall, refinancing some debt for the county. The difference here is that, uh, transaction was privately placed with a bank. This was actually sold on the bond markets today. And so, Andrew Tritt is here, uh, with Stiefel Nicholas. They were the underwriter for the bond sale. I'm gonna let Andrew kind of explain, you know, what they did today and, um, the good news on the interest rates. And then I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have got about the bond resolution or the contract or the process moving forward. But appreciate y'all being here tonight and doing this on behalf of the county, and I'll let, uh, Andrew tell you the good news about the money.
And John, real quick, before we start on the money, we have a new board member.
Oh, okay.
Um, I don't know if you just wanna highlight sort of what the purpose of the bond is for.
Sure, excuse me, I didn't realize. So, the county, uh, and has been working on this now for, I guess, a couple of years, Jason. Some water and sewer improvements realized they needed to borrow a significant amount of money. And part of the reason this authority was created two years ago by the legislature was for this project. It enables the county to use the authority as a conduit to issue bonds on its behalf and then use the intergovernmental contract to pay it back. So, the county intends to use water and sewer revenues, squash funds, possibly other revenues in the future to pay back the bonds. This is thirty-year debt, so it's a long-term bond issue. But all in, uh, the interest rate's about three and a half percent, so it's good, efficient way to borrow long-term for the county. Uh, and also gives the county flexibility to, you know, use those different sources of repayment to pay it back over the thirty-year term. The bonds also are actually subject to redemption, so after ten years, if the, there was enough money built up by the county, you could either pay it off, or if interest rates were more favorable to refinance it, you could refinance it at that time. So, there is some flexibility here. Um, it would be like, you know, refinancing your house, refinancing a bond issue. That's actually what, you know, the county did back in the fall, that y'all were used to help do that, was to restructure some, some debt, to get a better interest rate and get more favorable terms. So, that really is, uh, the, the authority, you know, acts at the pleasure of the county. We can act as a conduit borrower and be, um, kind of the middleman where the county can, uh, you know, borrow these funds and, and make these capital improvements.
Thank you, John.
That clears mud?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Appreciate it.
Andrew.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have.
So, John did a great job describing this. The, um, one thing I would add is, as an authority, you don't have bank accounts. You're not here in an operational role. You're truly just a financing conduit. So, candidly, I don't know that you guys are really gonna have any more meetings anytime soon unless Jason or the commissioners come up with anything in particular. John hit the nail on the head about the structure of the debt, how far it goes out. The only thing I would really mention is that we've sculpted this debt to wrap around existing loans that the county has. So, uh, that creates an overall level debt, debt service profile, which is easier for the county to ma-manage their water sewer raids and the payback and those sorts of things. The sale went very well today. Uh, it's a tough market. Uh, we were able to market all the bonds. A couple of the purchaser names that might sound familiar, Newveen, Center State Bank, Atlanta purchased some of the bonds. We've got lots and lots of different bondholders across all thirty maturities, retail orders upfront, institutional sprinkled all throughout the, the transaction. This was a public deal. Anybody could put orders in on these bonds. Part of this process, it's been going on for, you know, two years now, but towards the end, we sought bond ratings from Moody's Investor Service. The county got an outstanding bond rating of double A three. That's the double A category. After double A, really, is just triple A only. And that's one of the reasons to use this public facilities authority. If we just did a straight water sewer revenue transaction, we would have had a lower, uh, bond rating and a higher interest rate. So, uh, what's before you guys tonight is just this bond resolution. And, uh, John, I believe just, uh, a motion to accept the bond resolution as presented would suffice for our purposes. But we're more than happy to answer any sort of questions, and we're gonna have the same conversation with the county commissioners here shortly.
Yep, thank y'all.
Yeah.
So, I, I asked most of my questions before the meeting, and I, I think it's pretty clear. Does anybody else have any questions on the board? Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the bond resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, a second, a second. Okay. All in favor? All right, um, that concludes our agenda.
And that was it, yeah. I was prepared to answer any questions, but y'all, y'all have approved it, so I'll sit down.
All right, so I think if no more comments from the public or from our board, then, um, motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank y'all.